Public Works Subcommittee of the Board of Commissioners. It's not very frequent that a Subcommittee of the Board meets. I know we did one a few years ago on deer, a deer-killing program or deer-culling program.
Deer-killing program?
We've also done one on another public safety committee. Anyway, I'd like to set a goal of having this meeting end by 8:30. That would be two hours. I think that's enough to cover things. Who's here tonight? Well, I have Don Curley, Commissioner to my left, and Elaine Schaefer, Commissioner to my right, and I'm Jim Higgins. And the objective tonight is to have a roundtable discussion amongst the three of us and the members of the audience on where we are currently with our, the Radnor Township's Stormwater Ordinance and where we want to be when we enact revisions and amendments to it. So I prepared over the weekend a, what I'll call a matrix of as many of the comments that I could muster and get my hands around, including the Delaware Riverkeeper, Don Curley, the Gannett Fleming, our outside engineering company, the Environmental Affairs Council, and I had just a very few number of my own comments. I did not get any in from the Planning Commission, unfortunately, or from the Stormwater Management Committee, but we do have a representative of that committee here in the audience, Paige Mazz, with us tonight, and Maya Von Rossum, the Delaware Riverkeeper Organization is here also. So, I would like at this point to, and by the way, I brought as materials the entire ordinance. It's 72 pages that we have now. Put that with my Green Book. I brought the comments of Environmental Affairs Council, the cover letter of the Delaware Riverkeeper, and Don Curley's comments as well. So, that's enough of my talking. Why don't we go ahead and...
Can you say, "Hi, Mr...."
Yes, please. Come to the microphone.
When you say that you have a copy of the ordinance, do you have, are you talking about, you have a copy of the current ordinance or you have a copy of the current proposed ordinance that came from Gannett Fleming?
I have both.
Okay.
I have the original one out of the big Green Book here, and I have the Gannett Fleming markup, and I have your markup, too.
Right. Yeah, I'm just wondering which is the base one you're going to be talking from, but I...
Well, I think we're gonna try to...
The base one has, I'm sorry.
We're gonna try to talk from all three. Yours, Don, or four, Don's, Gannett Fleming's, the EAC's, and...
But the base has to be our, what we have now, and then how we want to change it. So, the default is what we, as I see it, the default is what we have now, and then what we're here to do tonight is to talk about which changes are best.
Great. Thank you.
And the Gannett Fleming markup is the entire ordinance. He didn't markup everything, but at least it's a, it has 74 pages as a base. So, all right, Don, do you want to chime in?
Sure. I'll just tell you my, my idea. So, one, I've been, like Jim and Elaine, we've been listening for a long time. So, I have, the way I think we should proceed is, is we should identify, we being the Public Works Subcommittee, with input from all the different, any group that wants to be, give us input as a stakeholder. We should identify the, the concepts that we've seen as problematic over the last eight years. So, the things that people have talked to us about that they believe are problematic with the ordinance. Then we should identify conceptual solutions. So, again, we shouldn't be, at this point, it's premature to red-line an ordinance change. We want to just identify the concept in a sentence or two that we think is best. Then we get the Board of Commissioners to approve that. So then we have the township saying, "This is the, these are, these are the concepts that we want to pursue." Then we have the staff prepare that in a draft ordinance, and then we send that through, through the, the review processes. So, for me, the four concepts that I identified as the ones that routinely and repeatedly manifest themselves over the eight years of stormwater discussions that I've had, one is this idea of inefficiency. So, that's the idea, that's this concept where someone has a small project, a patio of, of, you know, 1,200 square feet, and they, it costs them $9,000, but it, the engineering for that, for stormwater, costs them $11,000, and it takes a, you know, it takes three months. So, it's problematic. Some of these, some of these small projects are overwhelmed by the size and the complexity of the small stormwater project. The second one is the disincentive. So, our ordinance makes you do the same. You could, if you were, you had that small project and you could reuse your existing impervious, or you could put your new project on pervious, or previously undeveloped areas, you have the same stormwater impact regardless. So, if we could incent people to reuse their impervious cover, we could lower their costs and improve our stormwater. The third is the proximity to streams. So, we've spent a lot of time talking about projects involving development that was too close to the streams, and then subsequently, we are committing or allocating a lot of money for these. So, I think it's prudent for us to look at moving the development further away from the streams. And then my last concept is what I'm going to call the lack of retroactivity. So, the ordinance, in its current form, as we have, as we have adopted it, is one that really doesn't improve from past practices. It really set a baseline of the day that we adopted it, and it intends to sort of keep the baseline the same during the, during the future. So, it doesn't make it better, it just stops it from getting worse. So, if we could change that, we could, every time we had development, we would have an improvement to stormwater management rather than just maintaining the status quo. So, from that, I identify...
So, Don, so that means if a developer comes in and they've got the black box of development, but it's attached to something that's been there before, you would want to apply the ordinance and the, the modern requirements to the existing development as well as the new development.
Well, I'm gonna word it differently. Sorry, I don't mean to parse words, but essentially, we, the baseline, so you come in, you have to meet the baseline, you have to return to what you did before, and the baseline is the existing development. So, if you have an enormous parking lot, the standard against which you have to design is the enormous parking lot. If we change the baseline to either meadow or a percentage of meadow, then we would have an improvement as opposed to maintaining it, meaning the engineers that designed the new, the new system, they designed it to just meet the same standards as the existing. Whereas if we changed the baseline, then they would have to apply to a higher standard. So, five ways that, that I see us doing that. One is to, to modify the trigger in the ordinance that would require stormwater management. So, if we modified it to, to essentially have a net, go on the net instead of the gross, meaning if you, if you have a small project and you reuse your impervious cover, then you don't have to do, meaning you have no net increase, then you don't have to do stormwater management. This would incentivize people to reuse their existing footprint rather than, rather than expand the footprint into currently undeveloped areas. And we could, we could either say, "No stormwater management for net zero," or we could just have a net, meaning they get to balance the, the plus and the minus. If they take away impervious cover, that counts against the numeric value that they would have to design to. Second is what I'm going to call a simplified method. So, in Easttown, there's a simplified method. It means that the, the engineering is done beforehand. So, if you have a small project, you have limited choices, but you don't have to spend a lot of time or money engineering those choices because the size of the, of the pit is predetermined. You look in a table, you're adding, you're adding 500 square, 600 square feet, your basin has, or your pit has to be this big. I don't know if that's a good idea or not because the simplified version is 30 pages long, so it didn't seem quite simplified enough. I'm glad you're laughing, Steve. So, so, but it's, but it's, it's the concept. Like, we could have a six-page simplified version. Somebody could say, "Well, I don't want to do that. I want to do something else." And we'd say, "Fine, you just can't use the simplified version." So, that's, that's a second perspective remedy. The third one is the, is the incentive. So, that's the, just eliminating the, the stormwater management if you don't increase the amount of impervious cover. So, again, incentivizing people to reuse the existing impervious cover rather than expand. The fourth is just sort of take an arbitrary, I use 10%. So, increase the riparian buffer 10%. The idea would be that it would expand, or rather, it would be township-wide. We had, we discussed this in PLO. Some of us had concerns about having it apply in one, one particular zoning district. So, if we make this change, to me, some marginal amounts, marginal amount, something on the order of 10%, and applying throughout the municipality. And then the last would be what I'll call retroactivity. So, that's the idea of changing the baseline. And then, couple of, so, a couple of notes with that. One is that Tridifern has this provision already in place. So, to some degree, that's time-tested, meaning that we can see that it's been in place for eight or nine years in Tridifern, and we're not aware of catastrophe that came from it. Easttown has a similar, not quite like Tridifern, but something similar, and it doesn't seem to have the negative effect on development that some would oppose. A second thought is that if, if, when we, when we change to, we change that baseline from existing to meadow, we're going to, it's going to affect the peak rate also, and the peak rate might make the basins bigger. So, Maya, this is a, this is a discussion we had. Try to find a way to do it without, without making, without incentivizing basins. And one of the ways that we could do that would be by having the meadow provision only applied to the infiltration volume, not to the peak rate. So that when they're closing those peak rates, they use the peak rate that they use in the existing, in the existing ordinance, but they use the infiltration volume from the meadow condition. And then one other advantage of that is that if we, if we start tinkering with rates, which is what we saw when we worked on the, the North Wayne Field, somebody is a winner and somebody is a loser. So, if we hold the water back so that it comes later, then that water compounds somebody's problem later on, and we, we get into this discussion of, of we're trading upstream versus downstream. If, and if we retain the water as opposed to detain the water, then nobody gets worse. Everybody gets better. So, it's one way of mitigating, it's, it's a way of decreasing the likelihood of bigger basins and mitigating the timing issue or eliminating the timing issue. So, to me, those are the, to me, that's the starting point. Those five concepts, and they're, I don't want to say they're my concepts, they're the, the five problems that I heard people tell me for eight years, and they are the solutions that I see to those five problems.
Don, what the, Tridifern and the Easttown, what you're calling retroactivity, is that 20% meadow, 20 impervious is, should be...
Tridifern, as I understand it, is 100% meadow.
100%.
And Easttown's is 25% meadow, and it would apply to everything. So, every standard that you would have in the ordinance would be evaluated on that condition of meadow.
For all types of landowners, not just developers? Everybody? Applies to everyone?
Uh, yes, everyone, because it's a, it's a set aside, it's a standalone ordinance in stormwater, so it would, and then, another thing that, and I think I put this in, in this memo, or I think I put it in the memo that I sent to each of you, and I believe, I hoped it was, I asked it to be put online with the, with the agenda, is that we could have a trigger for that at 1,500 square feet, or whatever we want. 1,500 is the upper trigger of our current trigger, triggers. And that would, that would only apply to those big projects. We have big projects that come through, and those big projects would make a sizable, or they might make, they're worth getting at. You know, they might, those biomed-type projects, those, they would come through and they might make a big impact. We could do that without having this administrative burden on the, on the small-scale projects.
Okay. Well, there's a lot of substance in what you said. I think there's a lot of value in what you said. I'm wondering how we should proceed from here. My preference is to have an ordinance drafted, rather than have memorandums and then concepts floating around and more discussions. I'd like to see an ordinance drafted.
Don't we have to agree on what should be in the ordinance, though?
Well, that's what we'll try, we'll try to do tonight. We'll try to do that tonight. And I'd like to see an ordinance that accommodates as much as we can of the Riverkeeper's ideas, Don's ideas, and the start that we have, we've gotten from Gannett Fleming. And if there are, so you have, you have one ordinance with a red line, and maybe a blue line for, for different voices. And then where you have true conflicts, where you have, let's say, the Environmental Affairs Council's comments run counter to Don's notions or the Delaware Riverkeeper's notions, then we would footnote those. And if, and the same is true of the Stormwater Management Committee's comments, which I understand Heather has, they were submitted to us a year ago, and I'm sorry, I didn't have them incorporated into this document. So, we would footnote those. And, so the value of an ordinance is to get the process moving, to get discussion going, to get other commissioners, the other four commissioners, looking at it, thinking, and then bringing it before the Board of Commissioners for further discussion. Maybe we'll have to have another Subcommittee of this committee, this Subcommittee, meeting, and then send it out to our inferior boards and commissions like the EAC again, and the Planning Commission, I guess, Stormwater Management, Shagtry, Delaware County Planning and all. So, that's my thinking, to have, have an ordinance to get the ball, ball rolling.
So, can, I just think that's going to bog us down, and I don't see us, I think that's been the dilemma that we've had. That's why we haven't made progress in this. We've, we've all said we want to do this for eight years, and we've been unable to agree on what it is that we want to do. So, to me, we have to start with the concepts. We have to, and it has to be three to five. I know that sounds rather unambitious, but if we take essentially this and we put this into an ordinance with the input of five or six groups with conflicting ideas, I think we're gonna, we're gonna, we're not going to be able to understand it, and we're not going to be able to make the kind of meaningful input we want. The, the medium goal is that red-lined version, and to me, the best way to get to that red-lined version is for us to agree on three to five concepts, and then direct Steve to change the ordinance to reflect those three to five concepts.
There may very well be more than three to five concepts that ought to get into a starting document.
So, I'd like to suggest that we, tonight, come to some consensus on a few of the most important outstanding issues, some of which Don identified, and I, and ask our engineer, whoever it is at this point, I guess it's you, Steve, now, to take a stab at changing or adjusting the amendments, the amendments that have been proposed so far in Rogers' in Rogers' version accordingly, and then that's what we will react to. But let me back up from that. I've gone through all these materials, and, you know, I am not an engineer. So, a lot, some of this stuff, you know, what WQVP, VRV times A divided by 12, you know, I just, that's not, I can't really comment intelligently on that. I can comment on the more global discussions that have been occurring and the reactions to what's been put forth by the Riverkeeper and by Roger. I am all for increasing infiltration, having volume reduction be our goal, and having stringent changes to be much more stringent when we are redeveloping land, because that is the only way we are going to make real positive change. Totally agree on the retroactivity, that our goal should be to improve, not to maintain. However, this weekend, I watched the Planning Commission meeting when Roger presented his proposed changes, and I read through the EAC comments. And, you know, those two boards are our resident representatives, so they, we have to listen to them. You know, they, it's very important to take what they are telling us and their reactions into consideration while we are deciding how we want this to go. And at both the Planning Commission and in the EAC memo, there's a, there's a clear almost alarmism about the application of these more stringent parameters to the, the single homeowner. And we, at the meeting, at the Planning Commission, they said it again and again, it's, it's all over the EAC memo, and I, and I hear it from Don with the 1,500, I mean, I think that's what he's getting at with the 1,500 trigger.
Meaning a relief from that.
Well, right, that these, these very stringent, or I don't, I don't know that they're very stringent in the world of, of ordinances, but more stringent, you know, the 1.5 water quality infiltration criteria and the 25% meadow, that, you know, that could make a big difference to a small landowner. And when we see the example, when Michelle Adams, was that her name, Michelle Adams? When she's here and she's, you know, wants us to use the example of Philadelphia, it is a stellar example, and I would like to follow suit. However, it's not exactly apples to apples because the developers there are, are development outfits and organizations. For the most part, they're not single-family homes in Philadelphia. So, there's not this concern about the effect that it's having on single-family homes. So, one of the things I'd like to explore as we move forward with this is how we, other townships, if they do, if, if they treat those two classes differently. You know, someone developing as a pro, for-profit business and redeveloping a set, in a land subdivision or a set of properties, or even just one big, one property, but it's not their home. And the, the difference between that and someone putting on a deck or a garage, or...
Is it fair to say that the difference is, is regulated by size? Meaning, in all, all these municipalities, it's a standalone ordinance. So, to me, your concern is a good one, and it's, it's the trigger, it's the size of, that we need to adjust so that we get that kind of relief for the, the small property owner. That's the way I see it.
The other thing to take into consideration is what that would mean practically speaking to us. I mean, I don't, we don't have a whole lot of big construction projects. I mean, we don't. We don't have that much land that's, that's, you know, new to be developed, and I wonder how much of our redevelopment is single, single-family homes? You know, if we're going to, you know, sort of, for all practical purposes, exempt the single-family home for small things, does that, does that mean we're not reaching 85% of the redevelopment in our, in our township? Or is it just a small percentage? I mean, so, and I don't know the answer to that. I really don't. So, back to, back to the approach. I think the three of us, it would be helpful to take some of those individual issues that have been bandied about and get a little closure, just the three of us, that would guide Steve or Roger, whoever it is, who's going to be doing this next draft. We have input sort of all over the board, from EAC, from, well, we don't have written comments from Planning Commission, but they did make comments. We have comments from the Riverkeeper, and then we have Roger's comments. So, we could take, you know, a few of these big issues and, and have some closure tonight that we would recommend to our larger board.
That's consistent with your approach.
I think that's, I think that's what I'm saying, is that our, our action tonight should be, again, I think it's three to five, the three to five most important, and if there are 10 that are great, then that's five more for next year. But to me, it's three to five concepts that are most pressing, that we can find agreement on, we come to agreement on. I'd rather not direct Steve to do it. I'd rather have the Board of Commissioners do that. I'd rather get the Board to agree to those three to five. And, and to me, that's the point.
Well, I mean, we can agree to concepts, but none, I mean, some of us are engineers and some of us aren't. I'm, I'm going to defer to our engineer to get our concepts into working language.
Yeah, I think that's what I'm saying, is that what we have to do is we have to agree on the concepts. To me, the, the takeaway for this Subcommittee should be, it agreed on three to five concepts, it communicated that to the Board of Commissioners, and it requested that the Board of Commissioners have the staff make red-line changes that reflect those concepts that it agreed upon. To me, that's the takeaway, which I could, I'm comfortable doing tonight. If, Jim, if you're not comfortable doing tonight, we'd have to do it at another meeting.
I'll go halfway. I wanted to have one, one document produced and move, move forward with that. I'll go ahead and join with both of you on agreeing on four, five, six concepts, but I, I don't want to kick it upstairs to the Board of Commissioners at that point. I'd rather have it prepared by staff, an ordinance embodying those three to five or six concepts, and then have our Subcommittee be in charge of what happens after that. If it's ripe to take to the Board of Commissioners, fine, but I don't want to, I don't want to add that layer at this point. I'd much rather see staff produce an ordinance that is based on what agreements we can reach tonight.
Well, I agree with that, and I, I mean, the proof is in the pudding. We can say, make these broad, you know, policy statements, but how it comes out in an ordinance is what counts. And I also think that once we have it written down, or, you know, our policy suggestions make their way into a document, it gives something for the Stormwater Committee to react to, it gives something for the EAC to react to, so that if there are concepts that they feel that are very important that we have not included, or concepts that we've included that they think are harmful, they can react, and to something concrete, not just, you know, this policy statement. Because I, you know...
They can react at this level rather than give their two cents or their, their contributions after we act, and then the Board of Commissioners looks at it and it goes back down to us. Do it, do it now, do it our level now.
All right, well, should we start talking about some of these issues?
Sure. Don, do you want to see...
Do you want to hear, I mean, I, would, do you want to address us? Jim, would that be okay? I mean, I think...
Yeah.
Let, before we start, I mean, I have a, I'll, what I'm gonna assume is go through my memo and say what, and hopefully you'll agree on the concept, and then, but I'd like to hear their input on, everything that I said, I believe Maya will be in agreement with. I believe that it reflects the things that you want to see in the ordinance, so I want to hear your thoughts on it. I don't want to, that's fine to...
No, no, that's fine. I appreciate that.
Paige, I'm obviously interested in hearing your thoughts, too.
So, just so you know, the, the materials were not online as of this afternoon when I left my office, so unfortunately, I wasn't able to look at the, the memo, just so you know.
But you did, I did send Don's materials...
You may have...
The Stormwater Committee, no, EAC's materials, and the Gannett Fleming markup, and it was all sent to you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Jim. I apologize, I missed the email. I'll look for it. So, thank you for doing that. I really appreciate that. Just really, really quick. So, I like a lot of, of what I've heard. I think one of the ways, just in terms of guidance, when one thinks about new development, if you use the standard of no net increase in runoff and/or no change in downstream hydrology, that's a really great way to get at volume issues, water quality issues, you know, flooding, pollution. So...
Can we, do you want me to wait until the end or address it?
Yeah, I was just gonna really just like offer to the, to the pot, and I'm certainly happy to have a, but just reacting to what you're talking about and sort of different ways to accomplish the different things I've heard. So, I think if you focus on no net increase, right, and, and focus your standard on that, then that's the way you incentivize... then that's the way you incentivize volume reduction, reduced footprint, avoidance of cutting down more than excess trees.
No net increase of what?
Runoff. Or no, I'm sorry, yeah, no net increase of runoff, pre-development to post-development. So every site, even if it's a forest during the largest of storms, at some point will have runoff. And so if your focus is no net increase in runoff, pre-development to post-development for new development, then if you have a forest or a meadow, what you're basically saying is whatever that portion of the watershed's landscape contributed to the hydrologic cycle, you're maintaining that the way it was.
Right, but then how does that apply with impervious coverage already?
So I'm gonna, that's what I'm talking about. So that's what I'm saying in terms of new development. So when you're talking about greenfields, new development, you're talking about going onto a piece of land where you're talking about cutting a forest or something. It's fresh. In terms of redevelopment, just as Don said, that has to do with, first off, you have to include redevelopment, and redevelopment then can't just be no net increase. What you do, it's, you say no net increase, but it's how you do your underlying calculation. And it's really, as Don said, what you do is you don't presume the site is developed the way it is today. You presume the site is a meadow. And so when you're doing your calculation of how much runoff volume has to be maintained or prevented, it has to be as though the site was actually not developed or was a meadow landscape. And the reason why that's a compromise, saying 100% meadow versus 25% would be way too low, is because meadows are not as, do not infiltrate and/or evaporate, do not prevent runoff volume as much as a forest. So if you really wanted to be strict on redevelopment, what you would say is your calculation should be based on, if it were a forested condition. But we're not saying that. We would be saying it's based on a meadow condition. And meadows have much more runoff than forests because of their root systems, because they don't have leaves that evapotranspirate as much as trees. So you're already doing a compromise, but it's, you're saying no net increase of runoff, assuming that the site conditions meadow versus, like Villanova being totally developed out. And then that is where you have a bit of a policy debate. When you're saying meadow, is it 25% meadow or is it 100% meadow? And that's where you have your policy discussion. But that forces you to focus on, again, volume reduction and also water quality improvement. So just generally, I'm not talking, we've given specific language, but I'm just trying to talk, again, in general concepts, the way we have. In terms of small projects, I think it's really this dramatic false alarm that's being bandied about there, that if we start talking about no net increase of runoff for big new, for new development projects and/or large redevelopment projects, we're asking for improvement, that that necessarily means that we're creating this devastating condition for a private homeowner who wants to put in a patio. It's just as Don said, and I think Jim said, you easily exempt them out by the size of the project that gets covered by these new, better standards. So you really do say, if you're talking about, you know, an acre of property, if you go by square footage however, those projects are exempted out or come under a different standard, then that's the way you get your single-family homeowner who's trying to change, you know, what they're doing in their backyard. That's how you deal with them. Another way also, though, is if you go with a no net increase in runoff as your baseline or as your goal, that even works for your single homeowner because if you're taking one type of patio and turning it into another type of patio, or if you're doing like a neighbor down the road from me did, where they're reduced, they reduced their, they pulled up their macadam from their driveway so that they, and made it gravel, so that they could put in a patio area. And it was really, frankly, a very good idea. Under current township ordinance, they got, they were toasted. But under what we're talking about, that wouldn't happen. That's right. They got no credit for removing the macadam. That's right. So there are lots, I'm just saying, there are lots of ways to handle it. And I don't think that the fact that single-family homeowners want to be able to engage in reasonable, rational activity on their project should in any way inhibit the ability to go forward with a strong, good, progressive ordinance. Buffers is key. I think the way you're calculating a buffer, Don, is way too small to take the existing buffer requirement and just increase it by 10% or 25%. I would disagree with that, but that's, again, becomes a debate down the road. But in terms of criteria, I think increased buffer mandates protections is very, very important. It is very science-based. There's a lot of good science on what it does for flooding, flood damages, water quality, stormwater management. And as with anything, you will always have your out for a property that avoids a takings claim, or, you know, having a buffers requirement that negates all possible practical use of somebody's property. So for all of these things, they're always being out. But I agree, buffers is very important. And then, all the way around, whether you're talking, however it is you frame it, no net increase or whatever, just generally speaking, the focus should be on volume avoidance, volume in case of new development, volume reduction in the case of redevelopment, water quality enhancement, stream health, which is where your buffers comes in. And then you really should, and there's no reason not to, to have prioritization for green infrastructure projects and projects that help you accomplish your MS4 legal obligation. So broad, big picture. So I actually think, what I heard, I think we're largely on the same page. The only thing is, I think that there are false alarm bells going on about the small homeowner because I think they will be enhanced by this. And I also think through the stormwater fee, there are other ways to incentivize and help them enhance their current condition. So to speak to your issue, Elaine, well, if you don't make, single-family homeowners make any progress, then, you know, are we missing a boat because of how developed the township is? There are also ways to incentivize and help on the private homeowner's property using the stormwater fee or installation of projects. I don't think anybody should be afraid to use township money to install good projects on private property, as long as there are limitations on the property owner to damage that project. For example, easements that require that they, you know, not fill in the rain garden or not cut down the buffer. So, Don, if you want to talk a little bit, I was just trying to go with your idea of broad strokes.
Very good. Thanks. I just, so I'm under the impression that for existing, for undisturbed area, we have a no net increase, Steve. That's, meaning they would not take, they wouldn't use meadow. They would use whatever is the most accurate. That's what the ordinance says.
Correct. So if I own a one-acre parcel that is completely impervious, my baseline is parking lot, and my new development is going to be, my redevelopment's going to be whatever zoning allows me to do. And so not, not having the baseline condition change does not, makes, I'm sorry, makes the net effect much less powerful, if that makes sense.
Okay, so I just, so if we had a forest and we cut down a forest to put in a parking lot, the baseline is forest, correct? So, and then the standard is before and after, no net increase in runoff at the storm event, the two-year event that we've selected. So I think we're already doing that. Now, if you're saying, if you're saying no increase, hold on, let me, it's a question, not a statement.
Yeah.
If you're saying no increase at all, then, like, 100-year storm, no increase, then you're into, I would assume, a catastrophic incapability.
For rate control, depending on the district you're in, we have you take, you're reducing, from a rate standpoint, but we don't touch the 100-year. From the infiltration standpoint, you're, we're requiring infiltration through that.
For just a particular event, like a two-year event?
Right, but you were earlier talking about the net too, that piece of the hydrograph that they have to manage now. And I guess it brings me back to the meadow portion of what your baseline is, like you said. So if I, as a developer, I am, it is advantageous to me to be able to use my existing condition for my redevelopment because my existing condition in a township in an urbanized environment is most likely going to be impervious, which it is. I bought a property, wherever that property is, and it was parking lot and building, and I'm going to tear it down. My only restriction is the land use ordinance, which says I can only have so much impervious. And just so you know, it's like, even DEP doesn't pick one. They say go between 20 and 100% for meadow. They don't even get...
So I guess, Maya, what I heard from you, I heard, we need to have two separations. We need to have one that addresses redevelopment in the manner that I outlined. But then what I heard from you is that we need to have a second, different standard for development of sites that are previously not developed. And what, my understanding is that our baseline already does what you're asking for. So then I guess we would need to hear why it doesn't.
And what I believe, you know, my recollection is, and this was the same in the Gannett Fleming draft, is it's not focused on volume of runoff. It's focused on recharge. So it's how much water soaked into and recharge the aquifer pre-development is how much water must soak into and recharge the aquifer post-development. The problem with that is when you have a site in a natural condition or a non-natural condition, there's some water that soaks into the ground, there's some water that soaks off, there's some water that evapotranspirates up into the air. So if you're only talking about runoff and recharge, you're actually not capturing one of the most significant elements of the hydrologic cycle, which is what goes back up into the air. That's why volume is the focus, not pre-development recharge and post-development recharge. So it's a very significant difference. And Gannett Fleming misses that boat, Radnor's current standard misses that boat, and DEP's old standard was focused that way.
And I have to say, I miss that at this point. Doesn't mean I won't, but I don't follow what you just said. I look at infiltration volume. I see that as a volumetric measurement derived from comparing before and after. And by changing the before to meadow, we are significantly increasing the amount of volume that we would infiltrate as a result of development.
So we're having two conversations. In the new development conversation, new development on a greenfield site, okay? No net increase in runoff volume is a vastly different number than maintaining the pre-development and post-development recharge because the evapotranspiration piece is not accounted for in that calculation, and it's one of the biggest numbers. And I have a graphic that I can show you that maybe helps. In the redevelopment condition, this has been one of my big beefs all the way along, including with Gannett Fleming's draft, which is just what Steve, I believe, explained, right? So whatever your current developed condition is for a redevelopment project, however much impervious you have and runoff you have, that's what you have to match when you redevelop your site. You and I are in agreement. That's not good enough. That doesn't make progress. So what you have to do is change that calculation to actually pretend in your mind that only half of the site was developed, or none of the site was developed, that it was all meadow. And then that's how you base your calculation. But, so that plays out different in the volume and recharge context because your recharge figure is different when your site was all covered with impervious versus not. Even there, too, you have it, like, when, if it's all impervious, you didn't have any recharge. So when you redevelop it, your ordinance doesn't require any recharge because you didn't have it pre-development. So redevelopment and new development have to be thought of in these two different contexts. But it's that evapotranspiration piece.
I didn't follow that. To me, it's just, it's the sensitivity of the number. I see the sensitivity that you're talking about, but I don't see the form of it different. Doesn't mean that I won't, and I'll commit to trying to understand that better over the next few weeks.
Yeah. I don't want to monopolize the time. I just want to make sure and think about ways that I can help clarify that.
And then I'll say, like, the buffer part, 10%, some of this is, it's compromised. Nobody's going to get what they want. So if we press for too much buffer, then I think you're going to lose some support. So where that number is, is that policy decision that we have to make. I'm just, you know, part of why I'm proposing a relatively modest number is because I want to get support of seven commissioners.
Just so people can hear, 10% of a 50-foot buffer is five feet. Five more feet. That's not, no, it wouldn't be.
Okay, well, that's what we have to decide.
And that's, again, it's a policy decision, but that debate needs to happen separate. And I agree with you, concept.
And maybe what I'm saying is that, so everybody is, nobody is going to get what they want in this. And so part of why we might accept less is because in the end, we get more. Collectively, we get more than the single element. So that's all, whatever the number will be, we'll decide later. Just know that my reasoning for recognizing that 10% of 45 is a small number, but that might be part of what we need to achieve an outcome.
In your markup of the ordinance, what was your number? I have it here.
We do, we do a 100-foot buffer requirement, and that's based on Stroud Water Research Center science. And we also have information on a number of municipalities across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania where that 100-foot buffer did not impact at all development. In fact, development in some of those municipalities went up. So whether you accept 100 or not, that's what science-based and where communities have done it, it has not inflicted harm. And as always, again, one always has a provision where a property owner can come in and make the case that that buffer mandate is too large because of the particular confines of their property. But if you think about the Ardrossen site, getting an addition, that site could have easily accommodated a 100-foot buffer, which would have had a dramatic benefit downstream on the folks who are flooding along the Darby Creek. And if you only say that they had to do an extra five feet, well, I would think most people looking at Ardrossen would be like, that's crazy.
Don, you're thinking in terms of percentages. She's thinking in terms of flat rate.
What about, I mean, have you seen...
The difference is not, the difference for us is the magnitude of it. So we both know what it generally is, so.
10%, it's 10% of the current distance?
My understanding is that's what...
That was my intention.
What's the measuring point?
It's 35 now.
Center line of the stream too.
It's 35 now across the township.
So then that's three and a half additional feet. So you're going from a 35-foot buffer. I thought it was even 50.
No, it's 35.
It was me.
I mean, 100-foot buffer, I totally agree. I've seen the science. I've read the Stroud literature. But in Garrett Hill, it's just impossible.
Absolutely, and that's why...
So like, it has to be commensurate with the type of district that you're in because it's meaningless in a place like Garrett Hill. Every single place would be an exception, and then it becomes the Wild West.
It's also disproportionate, meaning that some would be affected by it, and they would be affected very, very severely. And most of us, it wouldn't affect me. It could be 1,000 feet and it wouldn't affect me. You know, so we have to look at, if this impact is disproportionately hard on a narrow group, it's problematic. And when you live in a well-developed community like ours, if you have very large buffers, you can make that impact disproportionately hard on a narrow group.
Well, and I just will say, many, many years ago, when we revisited this in this township, I was at the Conservancy at that point, and we were advocating for more buffers, I mean, larger buffers. This did come up before my time, before any of our time, well, maybe not before your time. But, and it was very controversial and very divisive in the township. And was eventually abandoned. So I worry that if we don't come up with something flexible and something realistic, 100 is, 100 flat is not realistic in our township. It's just not. I would rather come up with something realistic that's not going to sink this whole ordinance.
And, you know, and the thing is, again, I came up here and I said, I'm talking broad concepts. And I said, just like Don did, just like you have a starting place. I'm telling you, that's what the science is. I hear you.
Totally agree.
I hear you. I hear you that a property in Garrett Hill that happens to have a stream, which is not many in Garrett Hill, but happens to have a... which is not many in Garrett Hill, but happens to have a stream, would be affected very differently than a property somewhere else. And so I think one does work on flexibility. I think you also, though, have to recognize, just like, you know, Don, you said the converse is, big property owners have a disproportionate impact on those downstream. It is because of those big property owners clearing all the forest so they can have lawns, or clearing all the buffer so they can build new housing developments, that are having a disproportionate effect on the people downstream in terms of flooding them out and causing their flooding and flood damages, and/or creating the pollution that has put us in the position where the whole community has to pay to deal with the water quality problems, or to deal with the illness that results. And the people all the way down the Darby Creek, who had to lose their school due to flooding because of mold, and a large portion of that water coming from Radnor Township, they're even more disproportionately bearing the brunt of this. So I hear what you're saying. Everybody's going to be impacted differently. The fact of the matter is, if you own, if you purchase a piece of property on a stream, you get impacted differently. One of the ways you get impacted differently is in terms of flooding and flood damages. And when you get flooded, because you live on a stream, because of inappropriate development upstream, you expect those upstream to do right by you and hold their water, so you're not getting flooded. This is just that same concept. So I hear you. There are different ways that one thinks about it. And again, too, the property, the trigger, I think to use Jim's language, or maybe it was Don's language, the trigger on a buffer, too, can have to do with lot size. Maybe you think about it that way. But all I'm saying, sort of, I'm saying that just adding three and a half feet on the developer at Arderson, or on the property owners neighboring the Willows that have streamside property, just asking them to do a 300, three and a half additional feet of buffer, that's also wholly inappropriate, given that they are having a disproportionate negative impact on those downstream because of the land use practices they are choosing to use on their very large lots. So I think it goes both ways. I think, but I think what I heard is, conceptually, there is agreement that there needs to be something on the buffers front. To me, on all my years urging that, that's progress already in Radnor Township. And I was around during the original 35-foot buffer debate, and there was not the good science then, and there were people being inappropriately divisive. And I think now we've got a lot of good science, a lot of good information, and a lot of good proof about how buffers help people's property values, that maybe we can do it differently this time, if we're more thoughtful about it.
We're somewhere between 10% and a much higher number. But just as important, we have to take into account, if we go to a much higher number, or not so much higher number, we have to take into account the tight urbanized sections of the township, where compliance would be impossible. And then when you have nobody complying with the ordinance, then the ordinance tends to be violated elsewhere.
But, yes. Again, I think we're all in, I think we're all in agreement on that. I do, but when I walk around and drive around, and I see some of the properties I see that have stripped the stream bare, all the way down into the channel, and now the channel is falling in, that's not fair to the rest of us either. So. But I think there's a way to work around it. Again, I think what I heard is, buffers is on the list. Where it falls in terms of language, maybe, is...
Okay. Well, can we move ahead with a motion of sorts here, on the buffer question?
Did Paige want to talk?
Yes, you had mentioned before that Stormwater Committee had looked a couple of times at the stormwater revisions. I've gone back, and there was one that was very informal, that we just, for our own use, had a bullet point list of some items that we had discussed. And that was back from June of 2015. And some of this has already been discussed tonight. One was incentives for impervious reduction, especially for residential. Then one, I think, that was touched upon in your comments and spreadsheet we haven't talked about, was rational method. Right now, I think it's 200 acres. Is that right?
I have to correct that.
But reducing that significantly to maybe 20 acres, but that's more of a technical...
What point is that, Paige? 200 versus 20, what point are you...
For the methodology used to calculate flows. And that's maybe more something for Steve to, you know, that's more a technical issue.
So is it, the rational, is it, it's a simpler method, and so you want to expand that? Is that the...
No, it's methods, it's used more for conveyance calculations, and really is not appropriate for sizable stormwater management calculations. A lot of other municipalities already address that in their ordinances.
So we would raise our threshold to 200, or lower it?
No, it's currently 200, from what I recall, or from what we wrote in our notes before, and lower that to something 20, or perhaps lower than that, 20 acres. One other thing was reconciling some differences. We had found that there were different definitions of impervious surface in some of the different township ordinances, and reconciling those differences so that we don't have zoning and stormwater ordinance and all in conflict when defining the percentage impervious. Then, in December 2016, we issued a short memorandum to the Board of Commissioners regarding stormwater management ordinance modifications. And again, we touched on credit for removing existing impervious surfaces and replacement of existing impervious surfaces, in particular for residential properties. We had floated an idea out there for residential properties where infiltration isn't feasible or is cost prohibitive. Perhaps there could be an option for a fee in lieu of, with that going into the stormwater fund. And then, I think we've already discussed is that take into account the MS4 requirements, and make sure that those are taken into consideration in any of the stormwater management ordinance changes.
Some visceral reactions, then. So first, the issue of the rational method and the threshold, purely technical, you know, I would say, to me, I would say you guys worked that out. And Steve, I would say you just, to me, that's not a policy decision. I'd rather not discuss it. You know, I'd rather let you guys work that. I can't imagine that if Steve told us it would be better to be 20 instead of 200, we would change that. I don't, so that's my reaction there. The different, that conflict language, so that, I think we need that conflict language, because there are times where this came up, this came up with definition of green roof, and by allowing the green, by putting in a green roof, it let the building get bigger. We had this, to me, I don't see, I don't see a conflict in the language that manifests itself as a problem. So I don't see that as one that I need a solution for. And then, I don't think I want to support a fee in lieu when you can't infiltrate, meaning that I don't, I don't think we want to do anything that facilitates not following the ordinance and paying a fee instead of following the ordinance. So I recognize, I'm comfortable with the current language on the waiver. I don't want to change that. So I don't see much change there. And then for MS4, as I see it, this change, if we made that change of retroactivity, where we changed the baseline, we would be able to look at development over the five-year period, and take credit for that in the way that Michelle Adams indicated that Philadelphia took credit. And then I would say that, based upon how MS4 is presented to us, it's very decentralized. They're giving us a number, and they're saying, meet the number. What I say is, if we make this change, we take the credit for it. We assume that we are entitled to that credit, and we have DEP tell us that we're wrong. But to me, that's a step that does what DEP wants us to do if we make that change. So we should make that change and include it in our MS4. So my, just my visceral reaction.
I want to note that the language conflict that you're referring to in the ordinances, that is something that came up. Every single person, every single group that has commented on this has pointed that out as something that needs to change. And specifically, everyone has brought up the example of gravel and pool, and how they're treated differently. And the thing that made the most sense to me is just using a runoff coefficient, you know, that you could measure. And if it makes the building bigger, because you have more truly impervious coverage that doesn't have, or truly pervious coverage that does not have runoff, if that's a green roof, so be it. That's what we're looking to do.
Right. But you're... No, no, see, that's where, that's where I think you're making a mistake. The stormwater ordinance is a standalone ordinance. It's intended to regulate stormwater. The zoning ordinance is intended to regulate more than stormwater. So what you're doing is you're applying the standard for stormwater that makes sense to a zoning ordinance. And you're not, we are supposed to regulate the size of the buildings. So by making that, if consistency between the two violates the provisions of the zoning ordinance, then to me, it's a mistake to have the consistency. They're all bright people. They can figure it out. They've figured it out this far. So to me, this is, it's a solution looking for a problem. Yet, I recognize that it has inconsistency, but I haven't seen it manifest itself as a problem yet.
Well, I just don't think you can, as a township, tell a landowner that their piece of property, their green roof, it's impervious for this ordinance, but it's not impervious for that ordinance. You, what is, you know, there's a definition of impervious that we should come up with, which is maybe the, you know, .85 runoff coefficient, whatever. And that's impervious. And if we need to control the size of buildings under zoning, that's not the way to do it, if it's, you have to fudge imperviousness to do it.
I just am wondering if we're kind of mixing and matching here, building footprints, too, with impervious coverage. I mean, clearly, the building is still a building, even if it has a green roof.
Right. But the way, this came up, the one time I remember this coming up, it came up in that capacity, whereby designating the roof as impervious, it let the building get bigger. So every, a building, a site is constrained by a variety of things. And sometimes it's constrained by impervious, sometimes it's constrained by building size. So making, so fair enough, Elaine, just to say, the consistency, all other things being equal, consistency would be better. And fair enough to say that we can address it in the zoning ordinance. But what I don't want is to essentially say that the stormwater ordinance is more important than the zoning ordinance. So the rules that apply in stormwater should apply in zoning. If we can find another way to achieve that same outcome in the zoning ordinance, to have that consistency without making the buildings bigger, then to me, that's acceptable.
Well, you could just, I mean, you could just say that green roofs, even if they are impervious, do not count towards your, they would count.
Right, which is what they're doing now.
By interpretation, but that's not what the definition says.
So we could simply take the, take the way it's interpreted, and expressly indicate that in the ordinance. We don't have, we don't have to make a change that makes the buildings get bigger. We can make a change. We can resolve the inconsistency in the manner that you want, and still not have the buildings get bigger.
For point of this discussion, and the stormwater management, the stormwater ordinance, what we need, what I heard again and again from these groups, is we need to clarify and make more consistent and easier to interpret what is impervious, because right now, it's not working. What we have in there is not working. And I'm sure we can come up with a way to do that.
We hear what you spoke of, when we sit with developers, when we talk to them about using pervious pavers to meet zoning requirements, and there's one viewpoint. And then, when it comes to the stormwater management, I mean, to me, that would be good, to have that consistency for their sake. And honestly, we don't, we don't push that. And I think that should be, just a personal opinion, should be more prominent in the stormwater management ordinance. When you flick through, anecdotally, there's a lot on rate control, but we don't really push a lot. I mean, obviously, there's infiltration requirements, but...
Steve, do you not see, though, and Elaine, do you not see that if we make that change, and the buildings get bigger, the buildings get bigger with vehicles, the vehicles produce traffic, you know, so we are, if we, if consistency in and of itself is not the goal that we should achieve, it's what is the end result of the consistency. And if we have the consistency that I hear the two of you advocating for, that consistency will induce bigger buildings and more traffic, which is problematic. In this case, I'd rather have the smaller buildings and the less traffic, and have the developers deal with the inconsistency of our ordinance.
I actually concur with your previous statement. I think we should call it out, that, and we tell them this, porous pavers for stormwater ordinance is one thing, and for zoning is another. But maybe we, instead of changing it, like you say, we just, we very specifically quantify it. And as Paige said, the building footprint is still the building footprint, even with a green roof. And a green roof is not the same thing as a meadow, or lawn, or forest. So they shouldn't get that same benefit, if you will. But I, the land use ordinance should control land use. Like, I agree with you. And I think, actually, from the MS4 standpoint, that should be looked at from that perspective. But I agree. I don't think anybody wants to see somebody using porous pavers or green roofs to increase their building size, like a zoning bonus, you know, going up in height or whatever. But I think it should be specified, because we do run into that pretty frequently. And we do handle it in our meeting. It's not a big deal. But I think it would be best if it was called out.
At a minimum, I guess what I'm offering is that, that there's an alternative to simply closing the gap. And if you close the gap in the way that you've identified, it comes at a cost, and we just have to decide if we want that more than we want the inconsistency.
Well, it doesn't have to come at a cost. My, I think what Steve is saying is that in the, if you have a consistent definition, and it looks like it would feed into bigger buildings, then you, in the zoning code, define, you preclude that. You say, footprint is your impervious, no matter what's on top. Driveways are impervious, no matter what you're using for them.
Right. Which isn't what, what the group's recommendation was. The group's recommendation, and what I heard you say earlier tonight, was the exact opposite. Don't codify the way staff has interpreted it. Instead, change it so that staff interprets, staff, it's irrelevant whether it's, it's impervious, and, you know, so you, so you get to adjust accordingly. And what I'm saying is, don't do that. You can just take the uncertainty and codify it in the way that it's been interpreted. Codify it in the, in the form that keeps the building smaller, not in the form that would allow the building to get bigger.
Yeah. I won't speak for the rest of the Stormwater Committee, but these were just bullet point comments that we had at a meeting, and, you know, that, it was just because there was so much confusion as to what should be counted as impervious. And I personally have no issue with clarifying in the stormwater ordinance what counts as impervious and pervious for stormwater purposes. I think it was just a point that there's a lot of confusion. There has been a lot of confusion in the past as to what, what we're talking about. Just from a, not a Stormwater Committee, but, and I haven't read through the ordinance, I'm sorry, recently, but one, one point, I know I've run across this number of places, that the full-depth pavement replacement throws you into proposed impervious. And Steve, do you have any thoughts on that? I personally, you know, think that if you're replacing a parking lot because it's beat up, you shouldn't be deemed that that's proposed impervious, if you're just replacing in kind. And it may be a matter of the Act 167 model ordinance, and needing to follow that, but...
It's, the trigger is basically, once you get into the dirt. So if you mill your parking lot and resurface it, there's no issue. But you're right. Once you start to go full depth, that becomes... But you're right, once you start to go full depth, that becomes, takes you another way. I mean, we have a real tough balance here. So you want to incentivize redevelopment to keep your community being refreshed, but you want to watch how you do it so that you manage your stormwater management. So, you know, I know people are afraid of too stringent and then people aren't going to want to develop, but we see stringent ordinances elsewhere. But, and I know that's a fine line. You want people to redevelop in your community, to, you know, make it nowhere, to bring new people in, but we still have to manage what they do in a certain way. I mean, that's a good point, but when they, when they go full depth, it's usually not square foot for square foot. Something else is occurring when they go full depth. Because most people, what I've encountered here, are not going to, they're going to mill off all the asphalt if they have to, down to the stone sub base and repave, and then they're fine, there is no issue. It's when they do actually start to dig into the ground. And usually, when they do that, it's not area for area. There's additions, there's other things going on.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Okay. So do you want me to start presenting ideas?
Yeah, why don't you?
So the first one would be that we modify the trigger in the ordinance such that projects that have less than 1,500 square feet of new impervious cover do not require stormwater management if the net impervious cover is zero. Are we in agreement with that?
That's right out of your efficiency number one.
Steve, you're comfortable with what that, the concept that we identified?
Can I just make, just to make sure I have it correctly, Commissioner? So modify the trigger that if we have less than 1,500 square feet new impervious, stormwater management is not required.
If the net is zero.
Right, for a net zero.
So if, if in our current thing, you could have, if you had 1,500 and one and a net of 700, you would have full, you'd have the stormwater management. So, so this is a, the idea here is that this is a, this is a relief that only applies to those small scale projects. It won't, 1,500 square feet is an addition, a porch, you know, a patio, something like that. So it won't apply to redevelopment, it would only apply to that homeowner-sized project. And it would incent them to reuse their impervious cover.
And if you are adding, you're under 1,500, but you're adding impervious?
Well, that's the next one that I want to talk about.
All right, so before we do that, can we just briefly broach the cumulative debate about that 1,500 and how you get there?
What's the cumulative debate?
Well, that came up again a lot at the planning commission. And so what does that mean, 1,500? If you put in 500 now, 500 next year, 500 in one following year?
Yeah, for me, it's, for me, I don't see, I don't, I don't see addressing that cumulative idea that's in, again, at Fleming draft. And to me, that's the problem, not the solution. We need to be, we shouldn't, I want to make this less bureaucratic. And so in the, what you're calling, again, at Fleming version, that the minimum threshold goes down to 150 feet, and the township starts, starts addressing, starts adding all the different, you know, over years. And to me, that's, to me, that's a mistake. To me, this one, all this does is, it has no impact if you don't reuse your impervious cover. So all this does is incentivize someone, give them the option, doesn't require them to do it. It gives them the option of reusing impervious cover on their site. And if they do, they would be relieved of the engineering responsibilities associated with it.
This comes into play, if you remember the folks that came in for a waiver from the board? So they were taking out an entire leg of their driveway, but it didn't matter, they still had to do stormwater management on the new and the existing, when that would be a good thing. I might add one thing, Commissioner, and maybe it's too much of a detail, but if, if you remove impervious, we should have some specifications.
Yeah, it's not a detail, I know where you're going. So where you're going is, is we don't want to, they just take up an inch of asphalt. So you'll take care of putting in a condition that makes sure that it has the appropriate infiltration.
Thank you.
And what I've just described, though, is different than the one we had the other night. Because the one that came the other night, the family, the homeowner, had a net 700-something. And so what they were asking for, this is the second one that I'm going to put forward, they were asking for relief to say, let us just do it, let us design our system based on the net. I also think that's a good idea. This one's a little different. In this scenario and what I just put forward, if they go down to zero, no new impervious cover, then they have no additional stormwater management. All they have to do is satisfy Steve's requirement that they have adequately taken up their impervious cover.
Well, that was what the first scenario was, no net.
Yes, there's a distinction, though, between the no net and, and what the second one, what we did the other night, there's a subtle distinction. I know it's subtle, but there's a distinction.
What, that...
So, so the other night, when we had that waiver, the person was putting in some amount and taking out some amount. And so their, their net was positive 700, okay? And then what we let them do was design the system based upon the net of 700, rather than the new of 1,500, okay? But they still had to design a system. What, and that's the second one that I want to make. I want to, I want to codify that change. That's the second one that I'm going to ask for. This first one is to just say, now imagine that same family takes their 700 and they go down to zero. They get, they, so they're adding 1,500, they're adding 1,600 square feet, and they're taking away 1,600 square feet for a net of zero. In our current ordinance, they would have to do full-blown stormwater management to the fullest degree. And what this would allow them to do is nothing, because they are taking up one-for-one what they are putting down. So they have no net.
Well, I mean, that's fine up to a certain amount, but I...
That's why I capped it at 1,500.
Oh, I thought you just said 1,600.
Well, that's because at 1,600, in our current, I was using that as a threshold, they would be above the bottom limit. So they would have the full spectrum of engineering. And in this, what we would do is, we would cap it at 1,500. So it would only apply to those projects that we had intended to have a different standard, small-scale projects. It wouldn't apply at all to the big projects that come along.
I'm not seeing the difference between the first category and the second category. They're both net zero, and they're both under...
The second category is actually a net increase. So, I'm sorry, if I explain it. So I'm putting on a 1,500, I'm putting on a 500-square-foot addition, and I'm removing, or that's, I'm putting on a 1,000-square-foot addition, but I'm removing 700 feet, square feet of impervious. I have a net increase of 300 square feet of impervious. Is that the second condition, Commissioner, correct?
Yes, and I want to give them that relief, but I want to also, I want to, I want to further incentivize them. I want to incentivize them to have, to have no new impervious cover. So I want us to be clear that if they put, if they put no new impervious cover down, then they have no stormwater obligations. And then if you have, if you add no impervious cover, you have no impact on stormwater as the modeling and the methods that we use.
I just, I'm not following you at all here. If they are coming in and asking for a net increase in their impervious coverage, how are you asking them to put no impervious coverage at all?
Because the condition is that there is net zero cover. Net new, the net is zero. It's all, it does make sense, I know, I know, but you remember how that person came in? It was at the last meeting?
I remember, and we said yes.
So they weren't asking for a net zero.
But you're saying, no, we wouldn't have given them relief, we would only give them relief unless it was net zero.
No, but I want, the second point I'm going to, okay, do you want to do this one first?
I'm just going to give you this as a, so this is our grading permit, and that's where we all that up. And if the tally's up to zero, when you do your new, your proposed, and your removed, you don't have to do anything.
Up to, if it's under 1,500.
So we already have this provision then?
No, that's, I'm just giving that to Commissioner Shaper, because basically, the grading permit is set up to do what you want to do, we just have to change some words, like take out the block and say...
Yeah.
You absolutely get no credit for removing impervious.
So, so if you want, Elaine, perhaps we should do the second one first. And the second one would just be, modify the trigger in the ordinance such that projects that have less than 1,500 square feet of new impervious cover. Okay, so let's say it this way. Modify the trigger in the ordinance such that projects that have less than 1,500 square feet of new impervious cover would require stormwater management that is based upon the net new impervious cover. Steve, that makes sense to you, correct? Okay, so this is to...
So you're not asking them to make it net zero, you're just, you're only requiring stormwater management on the delta over.
Very good, exactly right. So it's, it's exactly what we did the other night when the homeowner came in.
Well, this, that, this might actually be a situation that does require some look back. Because you're giving them relief, and if they continue, if they use that a few years in a row, now they've been exempted when, when they shouldn't have.
Okay, well, I guess we have to start, we have to have a broader question of a look back then. So back up to...
I agree with you. I'm worried about coming in every several years.
Right, so if they come in, well, and not that anybody's going to purposely do that, but at some point, you are now, your project gets big enough that you shouldn't be getting these exemptions.
But we've been on the board eight years, and that's never happened. So we've never had somebody come in, so, so let's look at commercial development. The big projects, they are maxed out. They are, there's four or five variables that constrain these things. They spend an enormous amount of money. They don't come in with 10, 1,500-square-foot projects once a year in order to achieve an outcome. And then on the, on the homeowner's side, we're just not seeing it. We're seeing...
Well, then it shouldn't be a problem to put it in. It won't affect anybody.
It creates, it, so it does affect, because it takes the threshold down to 150 square feet, and the control that we have...
No, 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 I would use the same threshold you're proposing.
The control that we have on impervious cover is in our zoning. So people should be allowed to put as much impervious cover as our zoning allows. If you want to limit...
But not without exemption from the stormwater requirements. And we're giving them an exemption.
No, we're not, we're making them do their stormwater management based upon the net increase. So if they add more, then they have to do stormwater management. If they don't add more, then they don't.
If they add more, and it adds up to more than 1,500 feet, 1,500 square feet over whatever, five years, 10 years, whatever your look back is, then they shouldn't be exempted from the original, what they wouldn't have been, like, if they had been a bigger developer to begin with, what they would have had to do.
So Jim, that runs afoul of the provision that, one of the things that you've said publicly and privately, is that you, you want, you don't want more bureaucracy for these small projects, that, you know, these small homeowner projects. And here is a method that you can, you can make it not, you can eliminate the bureaucracy and not have the negative impact.
I think you're overstating what I've said. I have one bad example in my district, my ward, where they, to cite your numbers, they did spend a huge amount of money on stormwater management for a simple patio. That's one evil I'd like to correct. And, but I'm also, not an evil, but it's one problem we'd like to correct. But the other thing is, I don't, I don't want people to take advantage of the system and to come in every two, not every, but three years later, and come in within the literal wording of what we're proposing here, and not have to do an adjustment on stormwater. And you said you've never seen it in eight years, but if we change the ordinance to go in the direction that you're talking, then it, the ordinance will administer itself at our management's level, at our staff level.
Look, if, the whole notion behind giving the, the small homeowner that's putting a deck on sort of a break here, if it's under 1,500 square feet, we're giving you a break, we're not going to make you treat everything after you pick, you know, if, if there's a net zero or a small increase. But if you start to make it 2,000 square feet, 3,000 square feet, 5,000 square feet, it's not such a small project anymore. And it has a bigger effect on the problem that we're trying to address through the stormwater ordinance. So once you start, once, once this project or projects cumulatively get to a critical mass, whether it's 1,500 or bigger, I don't know what the critical mass is, you stop getting the, you stop getting the, the benefit of us, us giving this break because it's a small project. It's not a small project when it's 5,000 square feet. So I totally agree with your approach, maybe 1,500, you know, square feet is too small if that, if we feel that that's going to still negatively affect homeowners. But if we're going to let, give this benefit, which I think we should, to homeowners doing projects like decks and patios, we have to make sure that there's a limit. And that that limit doesn't, you don't inadvertently cross that limit because the project went over three years.
Just so you, we often get, so when a pool permit comes in, the pool might be 500 square feet, it's the decking, you know, the surrounding concrete or whatever they use, and, and then the deck off the house that can often push that up. But that's usually done simultaneously. So I mean, that's not one you have to worry about. I think you would have to worry about, I put in my pool and my deck, and then next year, I'm increasing the width of my driveway for two parking spots, but I don't know, I don't know how, I mean, don't get me wrong, somebody could try to take advantage of it. We have a similar issue, there's a look back in the shade tree ordinance that says you can't, you know, you're allowed to take up to five trees under 30-inch DBH, but you can't do that every year. And I believe that's five years.
Five-year look back? Yeah, I mean, somebody proposed in one of these documents that it was from the inception of the new ordinance, going forward forever and ever. I think that's ridiculous. But I do think if we're, I mean, that would be logistically ridiculous. You'd be looking at records from 10 years ago to see what they added, I mean, that's... But I do think if we're going to give this benefit, we should be careful about the limit.
Well, so, in order, to be careful about the limit, I have to see that it's a problem. I haven't seen that it's a problem. My suggestion, though, if, if there is going to be some kind of limit, I'm thinking as I'm speaking to try to be positive here. Steve, it could, it could be as simple as this, or could it be as simple as this provision is allowable once every five years? So you're not, what I want to avoid is, you have to keep a spreadsheet of how big somebody's patio is, you know, and they added a, they put pavers down for their trash can, so you have to add 75 square feet. But when they come in for the pool permit three years later, you have a limited, you know, in the file is a statement that they use this procedure, you know, circa 2017, and then it...
That would, that would be the easiest. I mean, we have them all on Laserfish, and, you know, you can search them. But that would be the easiest, I think, if we said, you know, this is valid for X years. Right up front, they know that, because that will also tell the resident, if they have a future project in mind, that they were planning maybe whatever, finances, whatever, that we're putting in the pool and deck this year, and next year, we're going to do an in-law suite. That provision would tell them, I need to do them together, and whatever the stormwater management is it is.
So, so if you, if you think it's a good idea, just my, my thought is, find a way to do it. But even in the scenario that you identified, imagine a person intentionally going to violate what you believe to be the intent of it, and doing this four, four times in a row for four consecutive years. Over the course of those four years, they don't add, you know, they're, they're not adding impervious. So just try, try to...
Kick in if you're adding net impervious. If you're, if you have no net increase...
Well, I still think the...
That's the way I read it.
Okay, I still think the way that you control the, what you see as abuse is with the zoning ordinance and the limits in zoning.
But it's a whole different problem that you're trying to, and it's not, it's not density you're fighting here.
Well, I don't, but to me, the problem hasn't been, no, no, but the zoning ordinance would specify the amount of impervious cover. So at some point, you can't... So at some point, you can't put a deck in because zoning doesn't give you enough impervious cover to do it. But, so, I, I would say at this point, we just have to find, if you're gonna do that, find a way to do it that doesn't turn this into Steve is compiling spreadsheets of, you know, everybody's impervious cover, you know, year after year. All right, so would we, is it fair to say that there's, there's consensus on, we don't have consensus on the lookback provision? So one, no consensus on lookback. Number two, there's consensus on this idea of modifying the trigger with the 1,500 square foot threshold to base the stormwater management on net impervious cover, provided that there's a lookback. So-
Under 1,500 square feet with a lookback.
Yeah, so, so you're, the, what I'm calling that second provision of incentive, you're comfortable with it as long as there is a lookback.
Commissioner Curly, I do have a question for you. So, based on the second item, if the net new impervious is 400 square feet, under the current ordinance, that's, that's a very minor, it's almost voluntary, it's rain garden, it's very minor. Would we treat everything from zero to 1,500 square feet net new as we currently treat anything over 501 square feet, which means you, and this comes into play for maybe that chart you were talking about at Easttown, you know, where we take the new impervious surface, the first inch, and we tell them how to size their pit. If you use stone, that's one issue, if you use a cistern, it's a smaller pit. So would we, because it's a net increase, would basically everything have to follow that, even if it's only 200 square feet, that you would do some type of infiltration if you're allowed? You know, we go through the ordinance, and we tell you, we tell you how to do it on the grading permit.
Yeah.
The size of your roof, times one inch.
Well, I'm not sure I understand the question, let me answer what I believe I heard, and then you can tell me. If, if we had a, under our current ordinance, let's say you were adding 1,600 square feet, and you were removing 1,400 square feet, you would have to design the system based upon 1,600 square feet.
Correct.
Under the change that we just, that, if we just, if we approved the change that we just identified, you would have a net 200, and so you would get the benefit that our ordinance provides of whatever it currently is, but using the, using the threshold of, the zero to 500 threshold, not the, so, so no changes to how the engineering is done. The only thing we're changing is the, is the thresholds, that the triggers that make you do that engineering.
That's the exact answer, thank you.
Okay. Third one, Jim, is that all right?
Yeah.
So, the third one would be, this is what I, what I was the first, presented as the first one a moment ago, and it's even more applicable now. Modify the trigger in the ordinance such that projects that have less than 1,500 square feet of new impervious cover do not require stormwater management if the net new impervious cover is zero. So in that project, in this scenario, is, if you're, you're adding 1,600, you add, take away 1,600, you have zero obligation, so not even the minimal zero to 500 obligation, no obligation, and there's no reason for a lookback, because what you've done is you've eliminated the impervious cover.
I agree, I agree, but why do you say, keep saying 1,600, do you mean 1,500?
No, I, I mean 1,600 to say that you're clearly over the threshold. So in our current ordinance, at 1,600, we have a 1,500 foot threat, square foot threshold now. So if you're over that, you have the full array of stormwater management. So if, if you, if you're, if you were 1,400, you would have a different array. So in this, it's, it's just saying that, that whatever it is, or, whatever it is that you do, it's based upon the net, and if the net is zero, then there's no ma, no stormwater management.
Up to 1,500 square feet.
Up to 1,500. So it wouldn't apply, it's, it's neutral, it's mute to what we would call conventional redevelopment. And Steve, you're comfortable with that, that's clear, your understanding?
Yep, I think we all agree.
Could I ask just to, just to backtrack? So, number one is modify the trigger. If the net new impervious is zero, there is no stormwater management required. Number two, if the net new impervious is less than 1,500 square feet, the stormwater management is based on the net, the new net.
Yeah, can I be a little, I'm, I'm sorry for picking hairs, but I, or splitting hairs, but I want to be a little, I mean, this is more protective. If the project is less than 1,500, and the net is, is, so, so what we want to avoid is, is, we, we want to avoid a, a 10,000 square foot project with a net of 600 that gets this relief. So, in, in our current project, in our current way of doing this, you know, this is a question, you look at the, the new impervious cover, right? That's your first trigger. If it's more than 1,500, then, then this relief would not apply at all.
Sorry, if I can clarify, so if the project, the total project is less than 1,500 square feet, and the net new impervious is less than 1,500 square feet, stormwater management is based on the net new?
Yes, it has to be "and" in order to make that, that trigger protect us against, we're, we're not allowing this provision to be used for large-scale redevelopment.
Very good, thank you.
All right, the fourth one would be modify the riparian buffer and increase it by, by five feet.
For this one, I think I would go up to 75 feet, in, except that it would, there would be some sort of formula or commensurate reduction for each zoning district, or for each lot size. I mean, zoning district pretty much equates to lot size. So in R5, it would be significantly less, and I don't know what formula, formula you would use, but on the lots that you have the space, in R1 and bigger, or two acre zoning, you would have the big desirable, that would, that's where you would start, on lots that could handle it. And then on lots that have a challenge, you would have some formula or some method for reduction to make it realistic.
Can I make an offer? I just anticipate that this is gonna be a very lengthy, would be a very lengthy discussion, and maybe something that I could volunteer to do for this group is to do some research on buffer ordinances that exist in other municipalities that have varying lot sizes, so you can see how other people are doing it, if that's helpful.
So, uh-
That would be helpful.
Can we just, we could put, I mean, this isn't, it might sound funny, but it, I think it's supportive of what you're saying. We can put in five to 75 feet, and we can, that's what we'll take the next, we're not, we're, we're making sure to not write the ordinance tonight.
Right.
So-
Somewhere between five and 75.
Which is a pretty big window, but, but I think that, that, my gut tells me at 75, we're gonna get a lot of opposition to this.
Unless it only applies to properties that can handle it.
Yeah, and, and that's what I would be looking for, is-
So, so we can, we can, it can read then, increase the buffer from five to 75 feet, and then Steve would need to come back with some method of, of delineating that, such that the larger buffers only apply on lot sizes, that scaling it, I guess, is essentially it.
And I think it would be instructive to have examples of how other communities handle this.
I, I will, I will do that, and then offer it up to the group.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So, I'm, I'm open to it, Maya, but I'm just telling you, I'm very troubled by the idea of 75 feet, so I'll give it a good whirl. Very good.
I'm not advocating, I'm just offering, do some research.
Yeah, no, it makes good sense, I just don't want to mislead anyone. Thanks.
That's all right, I'm not inclined to go for 75 feet, but I'm not, I'm not-
Yeah, understood. Okay. And then my last one would be that we modify the infiltration volume requirement of Section 245-22, so that the pre-development peak flow, two-year, is based upon a percentage of meadow between 25 and 100 percent, rather than existing conditions. And then again, that's, tonight, we're not gonna decide what that is.
Okay.
But that's a range of, we have two neighboring municipalities that have that.
And that's basically, the people, will affect everybody who needs to do stormwater management above 1,500 feet?
Uh, no, I didn't say that, but I, we did talk about it, and that would be good. And that this, this change would apply to projects involving more than 1,500 square feet of new impervious cover, not net. Again, we want that relatively protective, so it's the size of the project. So small project triggers relief, large project does not. Steve, did you capture that?
The amount would be to be determined, but the pre-existing condition would be somewhere between 25 percent and 100 percent.
Yes.
And it would be applied to projects that are greater than 1,500 square feet, not a net, as just the project size.
And it's just the infiltration volume requirement. And Maya, I'll try to work with you to understand better the concern that you had, and if, if there's a way to incorporate that, we can bring that back.
Can I just offer one way to deal with it tonight without resolving the issue? I would, I would just like to ask, one way to put, put a marker in for it without resolving the issue, much like on the buffers, if there could be a recommendation that the ordinance include language that focus on volume reduction and water quality enhancement, and also do so in a way that, does, ensures that developers are rewarded, not punished, for doing volume reduction in terms of their peak rate calculations. Just as a marker to say, volume and water quality is what you're hoping to accomplish, even though you don't precisely articulate how.
But isn't, by, by making this change, that we, this one that we just identified, we're making, increasing the volume, so we're having that volume effect that you want. By having the volume effect that you want, we're having the water quality effect that you want. And with number three, we're having the water quality effect that you want. Or granted, you're not comfortable-
I don't, I don't agree, I agree, the ordinance currently, and as you're talking about advancing the same concept, is focused on recharge, it's not focused on volume of runoff. They're dramatically different, and that's what you and I need to, or all of us need to talk about.
Well, Don's, Don's points are really just part of what I think our goal is here.
I would hope, that's what I'm hoping for.
I mean, I saw a lot of value in your changes.
Thank you.
We're not gonna get to them tonight, but sometime, we, somehow we will.
I just, and you didn't interpret that as I didn't see value in your changes. I, I feel like I've incorporated your changes, I, so I'm looking for the overlap of lots of different people, lots of different people are circles, and I'm looking for that common ground that makes sense. So, like, some of these ideas, like the idea of limiting the change to infiltration volume, that came directly from my discussion with you, when you said you had trouble about, you don't want to incentivize big basins. And if we, if we can have, if we can make this change for volume without, you know, increasing the likelihood of a bigger basin for peak rate control, then perhaps we've satisfied some of the concerns that you addressed.
And I think, and I appreciate, I guess what I was sort of hearing was that Don's list was gonna be the list. If you're thinking there'll be more added to the list, then I'm, I'm good. And just, Don, again, it's really, it's, it's a very important distinguish, distinction in language. It's volume of recharge versus volume of runoff, and everything we've advocated for, and that DEP is focused on, in the MS4 permit requirement, is in water quality and volume of runoff as it associates with water quality, not just that volume of recharge. And I, I have, I called up the picture, there's no way to show it to the group, I can show it to all of you, or we can table it for another time. I'm already planning, I think, to have some additional stormwater trainings to talk about this very issue, because I think the community needs to understand it as well as we go into this discussion, but maybe we could find a way to, you know, again, I'll invite the commissioners, or maybe there's a way to continue the discussion. I know, Jim, you were focused on eight o'clock, so I don't want to disrupt that. I just want you to, it's a critical, critical difference, and we're talking past each other a little bit because of language.
Well, yeah, I think, and I think where you're, where I sense you're going is that the change that I made is really event-oriented, meaning that it's a, it's a hydrograph of 12 hours of an event, and perhaps this is where we, but the change, if you're talking runoff, then you're talking about more than an event, you're talking about, okay, well, if not, then we'll, so I'll sit down, and you will figure it out, and-
And I'm focused, and I'm very focused on the two-year storm, the storm that happens, the storm that's happening regularly, not the hundred-year storm, I want people to know, I'm not, you know, so I think some of the things we're talking about are, are, we're on the same page. Other things were different because we're talking from a different focal point.
All right, well, we'll find out.
And hydrograph, another way to do it, and we got the state of New Jersey to do this, another way to do it is to purely focus on the hydrograph. What happens in the stream downstream from a site, but talk about complicating the analysis and the regulatory control, that is much more complicated if you're doing a hydrograph, what's happening in the stream, versus saying, what are you gonna do in terms of your calculation of what comes off the site? So just thinking about wanting to not make it so complicated, you know, that, that you have to have 10 Steves to figure it out for each project. But I'm not sure when to continue the conversation, but I totally hear you, you don't want to keep going on and on, because this is dry, and I need to think about a better way to communicate to you the difference that I'm trying to communicate.
All right, so-
We'll work on it, thank you.
Do you, I mean, here's what I would like to do. I would like to proceed with the four that we identified tonight. It doesn't mean that we won't do others, but here are four that we didn't agree on everything, and we still have some details to work out, but we, there were five very reasonable points that we made, that we could, we could take that bite of the apple, Steve could come up with that text that you want.
Right.
And we don't have to solve these other problems in order to approve this, so-
I, I want to see it in writing, like, I want to see what it looks like in the ordinance, though. I mean, to me, that's, like, it's one thing to talk about this and to, I think I understand, but I need to read it in an ordinance and see how it reads and how it, you know, if it makes sense.
I think there's feeling on your committee's page to, to get some of these small items enacted right away, and not try to rewrite the entire ordinance.
Yes, I, I think that's where we're coming from, a couple of years ago, in summer of 2015, when we were advocating, at least getting some of these changes incorporated now, knowing that the bigger process may take years and years, but, you know, we're-
Maybe we should push ahead with the whole process, then.
We should push ahead with the whole process, but-
Yeah, okay.
Can I request one more thing to be, we did the four there, we had that discussion earlier about the definition of impervious coverage. Leaving aside the zoning ordinance, and what it says in the zoning ordinance, and how that's interpreted, purely for the stormwater ordinance, let's clean up that language.
Elaine, you can't make that decision here. You, you can't, we can't, you can't direct Steve to, to even prepare the draft language for that. That's a decision, that's a zone, that's gonna affect zoning at the Board of Commissioners, you have to win that argument at the Board of Commissioners.
Is that gonna affect zoning, we're not, I'm not saying change the definition in zoning, I'm saying change, work on the definition in the stormwater ordinance.
Okay, so if, if, if we solidify that, if we find that consistency that the memo identified and that you advocated for, then it has an impact on zoning. And maybe that's the right thing to do.
It's not consistent now, so, I'm not, and I'm not saying consistency, I'm saying define it in a more practical way. Right now, as it's defined, I don't have it in front of me, gravel is not included, pool is impervi, I don't know about impervious pavers, that, let's find a way for purposes of stormwater management that equates to actual imperviousness. Equates to actually how much water is getting into the ground through the surface.
Yeah, Commissioner, so, because one of the things we come up with is folks come in with, quote, porous pavers, and there's a couple kinds. There's actually some that are truly porous, and most of them rely on the space in between the blocks to infiltrate the water. So, would we do that, and I guess this is really something for us to come to you folks with, is to say, if we- with, is to say, if we choose a current condition, and we'll say meadow again, and this is the runoff coefficient for meadow, what is it for brand X of pavers, brand Y of pavers? So just because I, as an applicant, if I say I'm coming in with porous pavers, we don't say, hey, that's great, you're off the hook, that's all for it.
Right, so there's some number that some, you would propose, and we would, that is whatever they call it, the coefficient of imperviousness, whatever it is. And that means that's import, that water's getting through, and maybe the pavers make it, maybe they don't.
Why, why is that an issue for us, though? Why is that no different than if somebody comes to you with Fescue or Kentucky, you make a determination about the coefficient? We don't make that determination. Why are you asking us to make that for pavers?
Well, we'll make that then, because I have folks come here and say to us, oh, my product is just as good as sand on the beach. Look, we've dumped 50 gallons of water on it, and it's all been infiltrated.
Right, so, so I don't, I don't, I mean, you, just, it hasn't been shown to me that there's a problem. These guys have-
Well, it reads, any surface area designed to be gravel or crushstone shall be regarded as an impervious surface. Now, clearly, there are, there are gravel surfaces that take in water, and I think that is one of the examples that is brought up again and again. And if you are showing, you should be able to show, this particular surface takes in X amount of, of water, it's, it is pervious. This would not, this disallows that. And, um, we want to encourage people to put pervious surfaces in.
Commissioner, just so in our, in our experience, a stone driveway over time does more or less become impervious, as that stone gets all choked up, it's a modified stone, and our, depending on your soil coefficient, that, that runoff coefficient varies greatly, but that's one of the reasons why, because if, uh, but look at one of our parks, so that stone, over years, that gets highly compacted. And I'm not saying perhaps in a very, very, very light rain, that the modified that's in between the stone does not absorb some of that water, but in a heavy rain, you will see runoff coming off our, our park, stone parking lots. So I guess it's just something to consider.
So, and then that-
So from that, Steve, I interpret that, that this isn't a change that, from that, I would interpret that you, this isn't a change that you would think terribly important to make. That, I recognize that there's an inconsistency, but it's not an inconsistency that if we resolve, we receive any benefit from it.
My thought is, just a personal opinion, not a policy, is that a stone driveway is impervious.
And so if that's true, then when you do your testing, or when you do your, then it won't pass the test. And there are stone surfaces, people use stone for, to create gullyways for their flooding all the time, and those are big stones, and they are perv, that is pervious. That's, they're designed to take in water. But under this ordinance, that would not count, because it's gravel, stone.
Right.
So my, my point is, and it's not my point, it's what all, you know, the people at the Planting Commission, EAC, and others have brought up, is for, just tweak that imp, that definition so that it actually means impervious.
Yeah, isn't there a way to take into account variations in gravel and types of offerings that developers make, and have to be reviewed by, by our people?
I guess it's, it's two different items. If it's porous pavers, which are pavers that have gaps that sit upon a stone bed, and they're designed to infiltrate, to, to take in stormwater, the manufacturer will provide us those calculations that we can check. If Radnor resident on Radnor Road says, oh, I'm going to install a new driveway, and my new driveway will be of crushstone like you see in, you know, Dipmar Park or any of those other parks, that, that's actually the one that concerns me a little bit.
Oh, right, there, it's a different analysis for this stuff. What about a green roof?
Again, I, I think there's a limit. I thought Paige's statement was, was really good. There's still a new building footprint, even though you have a green roof, and a green roof can only accommodate, I mean, they're great, and I think we should push, um, that type of development. I don't, I don't, I don't think you can call that totally, uh, pervious.
So do you know what other townships do? Do they count that as pervious? I mean, it clearly says that a roof is impervious in our ordinance.
As, before the next meeting, I'll do some research, I'll go to other web, to other township's websites.
And again, this is not for purpose of zoning. This is for purpose of treating stormwater. So if we can, if it turns out stormwa, green roofs are great at infiltration and volume reduction, why wouldn't we count them? We want that, we want them to be encouraged and incentivized.
So, I guess part of the difficulty, Elaine, is that you're not getting any more by changing, so we have a numeric requirement, you have to meet the numeric requirement. If you meet it through a green roof, or you meet it through a rain garden, or you meet it through something else, it's the same numeric requirement. So the, the green roof-
But if somebody who says that my ground doesn't infiltrate, I'm so sorry, well-
The green roof doesn't, doesn't improve the stormwater management unless you change the numeric criteria associated with it. And then I, I still, like, so, we could have, I mean, there's some improvement in this conversation. For me, what it's meant is that the, the number should adequately reflect the material, and we can make that happen, but for, and, and here's another little dilemma, is that we're, this discussion is like it's impervious or pervious, and it's not. It's, it's a value between numbers, it's a continuum. And so we can have the number reflect more accurately what it should, but we have to retain for zoning that capability that it's, if it's, if we go from 70 to, to 50, it's still impervious from the perspective of zoning. We have to, to keep that in zoning, it has to be one or the other, there's no continuum.
We're not changing anything in zoning. We're talking about the stormwater management ordinance here.
Okay, well, I, I again think we are changing something in zoning. If we have, if we have consistency between the two-
Which we don't now.
And that consistency, yes, and, and we've interpreted it, we've inter, actually, we've interpreted it with, what we've said is that you get, it's, it's either or in both, right? Meaning you don't get, it's, whether it's zoning or, or it's, it's interpreted as impervious cover, regardless of the material.
Well, we do, so I, I guess strictly from the stormwater ordinance is what we're talking about, to me, a green roof is a great thing, and it's a part of your toolbox of BMPs to help meet the ordinance requirements. So it's still a roof, and it's a system, with a system with limitations. So the, the green roof can only absorb so much water, so I look at it as a BMP towards meeting the ordinance, not a zoning issue.
Do you apply the same factor to it that you would apply for an asphalt roof, or do you apply a, a different factor?
We would see, I mean, so there's the different types of roofs, you know, there's the kind with cedum and a certain, a very light mixture, because they don't want to impact the roof and have to beef up the, the joists and everything. So I think we apply it to what the design engineer is showing us this roof can do. So green roof A might be very different than green roof B.
You wouldn't do that with a gravel road? You gravel road, you would treat it just like asphalt?
We have, and, and don't get me wrong, I'm sure there's some slight difference, and even in our chart, you know, we do notice, we do note, so like asphalt's 0.99 all the way across, whereas we even call out a gravel road, depending on your soil group, is between 0.57 and 0.88. So there's a difference. So maybe we, we quantify that.
So, so, but I'm, I'm hearing then that we're already, for, for stormwater management purposes, we're already matching the material to the appropriate coefficient value.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So it's still not clear to me what the problem is.
Well, if that's the case, let's have that, let's have the ordinance actually say that. Okay, because the ordinance does not say that.
It says they're impervious, and then it's up to the designer to come back to our table and say, okay, how impervious is it? That's, I guess, more or less is what happens. Just like we say, the, the asphalt's impervious, and he says, okay, I, he or she says, I know exactly what that is. Oh, gravel, it varies based on my soil group, but-
Still considered impervious.
I, let me take a closer look at that, and if I can put that in some verbiage for you folks. Just recap, we have item one, which is the net zero. We have night, item two, which is the project, no greater than 1,500 square feet. The, the item three is the look back, and I just have a TBD, so I'll just put some information with XXX. I'll put that sentence in. Number four is modifying the riparian buffer between five and 75 feet. And number five is modify the pre-existing conditions of infiltration volume based on a, a amount of 25% to 100% meadow for the pre-existing condition. And then a definite, a more clear definition of impervious cover and taking into consideration the gravel or stone driveways.
And what about green roof?
That too, sir.
Same thing. Thank you.
Those first two that you identified had that language of modify the trigger in the ordinance, that, I mean, you were copying it down, you read it back to me.
Yes, the actual thing I have is, item one, modify the trigger. If the net new impervious is zero, no stormwater management is required. Item two, if the project is less than 1,500 square feet and the net new impervious is less than 1,500 square feet, stormwater management is based on the new net. Item three, I have look back TBD. Item four, proposal to modify the riparian buffer by an increase of five to 75 feet. Number five, modify pre-existing conditions for infiltration volume based on a 25 to 100% pre-existing condition of meadow. Apply to projects with more than 1,500 square feet in size. Apply to projects that are greater than 1,500 square feet in size.
Correct.
I'm showing that is more, that's, so what we were, I thought what we were saying on that is, that's the big projects. So you're, that's the commercial redevelopment.
Correct, correct, yes, you're right. Thank you.
All right, anything else? Uh?
It's a start.
Start. Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn? Second, we're adjourned.